So with that, I'd like to call to order the special meeting for Royal Oak School's Board of Education of November 4th. Can you stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So welcome, everyone. And congratulations, the election is over. So that's a good thing. Mary Ann?
Do you want me to read the description as well?
Yeah, just the communications.
Oh, I'm sorry. As part of today's conversation, we also wanted to share the communications that we've received since the last board meeting in regards to the return to school plan. Communications that we've received disagree with the extended learning plan decision. Libby Levy, Mary Ann Bee, Dinam Meldorchi, Orit Milligan, Becky Merle, Ashley Moore. Supports return, remaining in a virtual learning plan, Laura Logan, Annette Frank, Robert Bedard. Regarding in-person special meeting, Christina West. In regards to mental health supports, Tammy Blackwood.
Thank you. With that, we'll move into item 2.1, the extended learning plan. Is there a resolution? Do you want to read it? This is Ann Heitzma.
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves of the following. Whereas Oakland County has now moved from a rating of C to an E on the school building spread indicators. For the guidance for in-person instruction from Oakland County Health Division, which states, "Building, building, buildings with known cases in staff or students but no ongoing transmission should consider remote instruction in the entire district." At the elementary level, students will engage in synchronous and asynchronous learning activities five days a week. Synchronous lessons will occur Monday through Thursday. Office hours and opportunities for parents and students to conference with teachers are available daily on a scheduled basis. Asynchronous lessons will occur Monday through Friday. At the middle school level, synchronous lessons will be offered at consistent scheduled times, Monday through Friday. SEL student support, asynchronous activities, and reserved opportunities for individual and small group student-teacher conferencing will continue to be important elements of the weekly schedule. At Royal Oak High School, both synchronous and asynchronous activities take place Monday through Friday. Student conferencing and office hours are available Tuesday through Friday in the afternoons. Churchill students will continue with remote asynchronous learning, Monday through Friday, in the same method they have been since the beginning of the school year. Opportunities for students to come in and work with teachers and get support from staff on an as-needed basis will continue to be an option. At the GSRP, Great Start to Readiness Program level, students will move to a full remote program, engaging in synchronous and asynchronous learning activities four days of the week. Office hours and opportunities for parents and students to conference with teachers are available daily on a scheduled basis. Special education students, pre-K to post-secondary, will move to a full remote program, engaging in synchronous and asynchronous learning. The district ensures a continuation of services for students receiving speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, or social work services within their IFSP or IEP. The district also ensures a method for the continuation of evaluation for students suspected of having a disability, as well as those requiring reevaluation. Per the requirements of the state of Michigan, we are required to review the Royal Oak Schools' Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan with the Board of Education once per month for their consideration.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. So in terms of discussion, Mrs. Fitzpatrick, would you like to start, and then the board can ask questions or have discussion?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Just to be clear, the matter before you, the resolution that we presented includes, regarding the Royal Oak Schools' Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan, the recommendation of the superintendent and the team of administrators is to remain in the current remote learning mode until the end of the first semester, January 29th, 2021. So I wanted to be clear tonight, just to give you some information regarding how we arrived at this decision or recommendation to present to you tonight, things that we've learned from around the county and our partners at the Oakland County Health Division, which has been a significant source of information to guide us. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for calling this special meeting tonight. I think it speaks to the urgency and to the importance of the matter before us tonight. On October the 8th, you will remember that we reviewed our return to learning plan and anticipated a return of students to the classrooms on November the 9th, which would be Monday. We have put before the parents three different learning opportunities for elementary students, and parents took a survey to share with us what they would like and the plan they would like for their children. At ROMS, the students would be hybrid in the alternating schedule, along with students who would remain remote with Royal Oak Middle School teachers, and that's also known as the Virtual Academy option for the middle school. So it looks a little different than the elementary. And then Royal Oak High School would be all remote, as they had planned, but they would convene small groups as socially distanced and by a sign-up method. So much has changed now with the virus in the last few weeks, and those changes with that medical situation, as well as operationally for us as a district, really gave us a lot of information to bring forth this proposal to you tonight. We've had multiple discussions with our staff, representatives from our teachers' union, the ROEA, and other work groups, and also our team of administrators. We've received hundreds of emails, calls, letters, and conversations that we've had around the community regarding this return to school plan. I can share with you that this is not an easy decision. It's complicated, it's complex, and it certainly is not anything that gives us all a chance to sleep comfortably at night, but rather to be thinking about this and the safety and security of our students and the health and safety of our staff as well. I'd like to share with you that I have collaborated with the Oakland County Health Division. I was able to be on a call with three specialists from that division to just talk about Royal Oak and the situation that we're experiencing right here in our own community. The rating for the state is still in the phase of Level 4, which means that we can have in-person instruction if deemed safe. That's why we know there are some districts around us that can still have students in the classrooms. We're free to move about in the community. Many of the retail stores are open, restaurants, bars, gyms, et cetera, are all open. Phase 3, as you'll recall, in the spring, is when the state would tell us that we cannot have any in-person instruction. So that has not changed. The guidance for in-person instruction that was referred to in the resolution does talk about the risk factors, however. So it's a separate scale, it's not with regard to the phases in the state, but rather the county-level risk determination. At one point this summer, we were at a C, and for a long time, we hovered there within our area of the county, actually, the entire county. We were only at a D level, which is one more risk factor serious, and that was for a very short period of time. By last Friday, we had dropped to a Level E. And as a reminder, that risk factor tells us that there are 150 or greater cases per million in the community, and there are 20 or greater percent of positivity of those being tested. That is the most risk, that's the highest risk factor that they could place on us. There's nowhere to go from here. So we know that with that information, the recommendation we gave you on October the 8th no longer will fit our community, according to our determination. So many of the other factors that we talked about with the county, and I again applaud them for helping us, the reporting of cases with or without transmission is a huge responsibility. I've watched our administrators over the last several weeks put out emails, answer calls, that had nothing to do with math, or reading, or social studies, but rather, what do I do? How do I help my child? Should I come to work or not? It has consumed our time, and we are taking on the huge responsibility of ensuring the safety of our staff and our students. Our mitigation plans are strong, our PPE is in place, the supply chains are ready to go, but with this highest risk factor now upon us, we believe it is not the safest plan any longer. According to the Health Department in my conversation that I had with them, this area of the county fluctuates quite rapidly. You will find districts that we border, who are in a different situation for their community than we are. Our mobility rates in Royal Oak may be different from those communities around us, and those superintendents and staff are making the best decisions for their districts as they can. We also know that every case results in multiple quarantining situations. So while we may have a staff member who hasn't been in the building for a while, she may have, or he may have, a positive case in their home, that staff member now needs to quarantine. The quarantine for a staff member, if they're not the positive case, has to begin when the infected person in the household ends. That means we could have staff members, best-case scenario, out for 28 days in a row, 14 days for the positive case in their household, and 14 additional days to quarantine themselves before returning to work. I was able to present you with some statistics about our district, I'd like to share those now. I will recognize that Mr. Wilensky is our executive director for Staff and Student Services. He's unable to be with us tonight, but did provide me with the information. You will find on our website that we do post the positive cases that impact the school, either by a staff member or a student who would have been in the district. This data does not include cases that are reported to us for individual households in the community of Royal Oak, or in our staff members' households if they have not been at work. So we know that we have other cases that may not show on our website, but that is at least our public tracking of the cases that we have in front of us and know about in the district. Right now, we have a number of teachers that are seeking FMLA. We have some that have a pending FMLA request to stay home and not come back to work should we return to work. We have many who are not and cannot come to work due to their own health status or that of someone in their family. And that has been collected by our staff members and through Mr. Wilensky's office all fall. We also know that we have some edger staff who are quarantining, and some personnel in our custodial and maintenance division as well. In talking to our HR department, they shared with me that they reached out to 200 different staff who have subbed for us on different occasions in Royal Oak schools, those that regularly pick up the jobs for our district or those that have occasionally been here. Out of the 200 phone calls and/or emails that were sent, and trying to connect with those subs and get them on our rosters to be permanent subs for us, we've received two positive calls back. The rest of the staff that we contacted either did not call us back, or have called us back to tell us that they're not interested in taking a job at this time. Our students deserve, and we were planning to have them in front of their teachers this fall. With this sub shortage, or a lack of other adults to put in the classrooms, we would be forced, upon special circumstances and cases, to close individual classrooms or whole schools. Colleagues around the county, other superintendents and districts are seeing this right now, who are open, and it's a very unstable environment. In fact, on my way here, I received a text from a niece of mine, who teaches in a public school district, and her district has now moved to remote instruction as well due to the cases in their own community. So I believe we're all seeing the same. We have some staff members who have met their quarantine timelines already this fall, and they are able to come back on Monday if we could, but instead, we have close to 30 different cases that we're navigating right now, and those would impact staff who are unable to return on Monday. Any questions about that information so far? Mr. Brink? I'm sorry, Briggs?
Yes. Do we know some of the districts around us that are opening, or going to open, or are changing their minds and going back into a remote?
We do, and I can say that at any time through this crisis, we could find districts doing a plan just like ours, or pull our opposites in either direction from what Royal Oak was doing. I know the neighboring districts around us, Berkeley Schools announced a pause to their in-person instruction, and at least three districts at the southeast quadrant here in Oakland County, I believe, Ferndale, Oak Park, and Southfield Schools are all on full remote learning through January. I believe Rochester Schools made an announcement earlier this afternoon to move to a remote learning mode, and we're watching some other school districts close either parts of their buildings, whole buildings, or their district. So I'm just checking my texts because I asked for some additional information from colleagues. Also in full virtual, according to what I know, is West Bloomfield here on Valley. Some schools in Clarkston and Waterford Schools, either temporarily over the next few weeks. Making sure my mic is on. One of the things that's in this proposal is that we would not consider leaving remote learning until the end of January, the end of the first semester. I know that when we went to the end of the first quarter, we really zeroed in on that date, and maybe there might have been a couple of weeks that we could have made some different choices, and it felt like maybe we were focused on the date more than even the learning plan. So has there been any consideration to making that maybe slightly more flexible? I know the recommendation is to consider pausing for 14 days when you're in an E status. Wonder what the thoughts were on that? Sure. So it's all about making the decision and knowing your circumstances at the time that you're making them. So back in October, when we made the decision, or actually, before the school year started, to make the decision not to consider to come back until the end of the first quarter, remember, we were at a time when we had very little guidance from the county Health Department regarding what to do. We had our PPE and other things in place, but our protocols and navigating positive cases, there weren't very many to do. We're in a different situation now. As I said earlier, we've had a lot of experience, unfortunately, at navigating those cases in a lot of direction now from the county Health Department. For a secondary school, the middle school and the high school, trying to jump in and out of modes of learning during the semester is very difficult. Students are assigned to certain classes and certain sections, and depending on the choices that our parents would have made, there's somewhat of an imbalance to the numbers. Now that we're going to stay remote, they probably will begin to balance some of those sections back out, much like you do with a master schedule all the time. But the learning for secondary students is very dependent on quarters of the year or the semester, according to the courses that they're taking. Elementary is different, and we know that. It's more the scope of an entire year and a scope and sequence of the lessons and the units that they take place, that take place throughout the year. I would say that what we wanted to do is give somewhat of predictability to where we would be. So at the very minimum, we're looking at this plan once a month, that is also in the resolution. That's a requirement of the state of Michigan, and we will do that. We will bring this before you at each regular board meeting here on out, and that is a directive in a public act from the state. We will continue to look at the situation, much like we have been. You know, as of 10 days ago, we thought we were coming back on Monday, and then based on what we knew and the changing of the status, we're now changing our recommendation. I know that we will continually look at this plan, to answer your question. That's absolutely true, we will. But we also know that we want to do it when it's the safest possible, but I can't answer exactly what that looks like. I will say, similar to what I said this summer, if the cases are dropping, and the county changes the phase that we're in, and the governor remains in a status of Phase 4 or better, then we could look at, and for your consideration, talk about bringing our kids back sooner. But we wanted to at least know that for our secondary students, you know, it would be very difficult to come in and out before the end of the marking period.
Mrs. Van Heitzma?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So one of them is, so the PPE, I'll start with PPE. So PPE, as of right now, everybody has PPE, right? Because our cases were better, everybody's stocked up, but that supply, I'm assuming, you know, what kind of supply do we have, and how quickly would that be depleted? And if we see this trend happening right now, which we do, what are the odds of us hitting that issue again where those supplies are depleted?
So we were planning for return the first day of school right after Labor Day. So in terms of a supply chain and predictions for us, we were ordering throughout the summer, and we were placing orders with our, you know, closest vendors to keep us in a continuous chain as much as possible, but we are months out in terms of being able to have the appropriate PPE in all of our areas. So each day that we're not in school, that PPE is sitting there, and it pushes out the stock that we have to put in place. But in addition to masks, sanitizers, installing new soap dispensers, having the sinks, and all the changes that we've done to our physical buildings themselves, we also have purchases that were just placed again for more protective shields and more masks, just to make sure that we're well-equipped and ahead of the curve in demand of the supply chain. But our subcommittee, Ms. Bella and Mr. Murphy and their staff have done a very good job of making sure we are well-prepared. Should it not continue like that and there be something in the future, we would certainly then need to consider that in any plan of having staff or students back. But right now, we're well-prepared.
So more questions?
Please.
So as we talked about, so we don't have subs, is what I hear you say, right? So we have two potential subs out of 200. And so what we're seeing, the trends that we're seeing right now is, it's, you know, obviously, people are being tested more. I think we hear pretty regularly, people are being tested more just because they want to be safe, and, you know, it's logical, right? So we wouldn't be able to cover subs, I mean, quite honestly. If we went back, and I'm assuming, just watching our trend line, as I just looked at our trend line, so we only have cases reported almost every day, which leads me to another question. But so, we don't have the subs to cover in case we have an issue? In case we had to close a school or a class? Not a school, but more so, we just don't, we have not, we don't have the subs, and not only that, then the subs that you could engage with wouldn't necessarily be trained to just step into our, the learning plan that we have in place today?
Right. So, you know, we had a provision for that. So should subs be an issue, or if we thought subs were going to be an issue on an intermittent basis, we would send an individual class home, we would have the teacher remote in if he or she were able to, be a teacher virtually for the class, and then we would place another adult with the opposite cohort that maybe would not have been quarantining. So we had a provision for it. That was supposed to be a plan that would be on an occasional basis, should we need it. The numbers that we're seeing now, with staff being out and the shortage of subs, we wouldn't be able to keep that pace up. So it's likely that if we had a number of staff out at a single building, we would need to close that whole building, but maybe not the rest of the district. So you will see districts around us, in many counties around us, that are closing parts of their district, but they're able to leave some buildings open. And so it's not a district-wide decision, but we're smaller than that as a district than some of those districts are. You know, we have one high school in our Churchill program, but not three traditional high schools that some of our surrounding districts have. So if we were in that situation and going back, and we didn't have a sub, we would intermittently close that class or possibly that school. That's what we would need to do.
The other thing, too, so as people, we had surveyed families, which is now, I think, like two weeks ago, and we knew what their plans were, as these numbers have changed, my guess is people are rethinking those decisions. And I think that the challenge in finding the right balance is just, you know, health and safety has obviously a paramount importance, and then not frustrating parents. And I guess that's the part that drives me slightly crazy, is how do we best support them to not have to constantly rethink their childcare? You know, the high schoolers can be independent, but not the little guys. So I think that's really something to be considered, and that even, I think I'd like to know that when we consider having a return to learn, that we really have a very specific plan outlined, very specific parameters to know what metrics we're going to use to return to school. I think that's pretty key, and I think that's been a frustration for a lot of people, myself included, which Mr. Brinker is well-aware, I probably call him every day and say, why don't we have metrics? So I think, I think that's really a big consideration, is the least disruption to families. I mean, in talking with some families yesterday, I think, too, is one of, you know, that's one of the challenges, right? So they were planning on returning on Monday, and now, you know, they have to make different arrangements if we make a change, and just that continual flip-flopping is a frustration for a lot of people. So I think that's a big consideration, too.
Well, and to build on that also, I mean, the fact is, is that if we are going partial hybrid, and we do have an outbreak, it's not a warning to parents that we're going to be closing, it is, we are closed tomorrow. And that is going to put a lot more pressure on parents for making arrangements for their students if, you know, automatically, it's not going to be like, next week, we're closing, it's going to be, we're closed tomorrow. So right now, taking this position of as safety-concerned as much as possible, but also, it is trying to have a plan that is going to help people be able to prepare for what they have to do. So I mean, everyone up here, and I know everyone out in our district, would like to be back in the classroom teaching, and this is not what we would like to be doing. But I think, as an option, if I was a parent, I would like to know what my kid's going to be doing next week, instead of that night or that afternoon getting a call that I have to find and make arrangements for my student for the next day. So that's just another add-on.
So two points I'll make to that. One, the plan that we've been in this fall, and this was a point of a lot of time put in by our administrators on this point, is that we wanted to provide some continuity to our families, we wanted there to be somewhat of predictability, and so in our delay to come back face-to-face and taking the fall to be most ready, and also watching the situation based on the new guidance now that we have from the Health Department, we were looking for that level of continuity and predictability, if that can exist. Doesn't seem like that goes together but COVID and predictability. But there are some things that we are watching in terms of the virus, and that our county health officials are also asking us to look at, and that is the holidays. So the timing of this, as I started before, when you make a decision, it's where you are at the time you're making that decision. What we're doing today may not have applied back in August, and what we did then does not apply now necessarily. We do expect people to be more mobile closer to the holidays, that's a reality. People are becoming fatigued with staying home and staying secluded, and so the more mobility and the more people are together and there's more contact, the virus will spread. So we're watching that, and it will fluctuate and change. So with that, we knew that to go back, if today hadn't happened, and it happened two weeks from now, we would have had children back maybe four school days before we had to shut down again. So in some ways, we're fortunate that we're making the decision before we had to disrupt everything to try to be back. And again, I agree with you, everyone wants to be back in front of the children. That's what we do as educators, that's what we trained our whole lives to do. We want to be there with our students, and would like nothing more than to do that. But based on where we are today, the information that we have today, and we have a chance to make a change before Monday, that's why we called this meeting, and that's why our administrators have worked so hard on making this recommendation to you as well.
Any other questions, Mrs. Anderson?
One of the benefits that we had talked about was we had the Oakland County Health Department nurses with us, I think, through the end of the calendar year. Do we know anything about whether that will continue into the new year, or have we heard anything about that?
So the partnership was set to end at the end of the calendar year. I have not heard if that would be extended, but I will say, the nurses that have been assigned to us, we have two assigned to Royal Oak, have been very helpful in establishing and setting up our wellness rooms, the quarantining or isolation rooms that we needed to, by law have in every school. They've given us a lot of guidance around the protocols and things that we worked on all summer, and have helped us to tweak those plans. So again, we've spent the fall being more prepared, and that's been very helpful. But I will say that the Health Department in general, the staff who work there permanently, maybe not under this nurse assignment, but from the Health Department, have also been very helpful. And so even if the nurse program does end by the end of December, I'm confident that we have the collaboration and the support from the County Health Division itself to provide us guidance, based on, again, the conversations that I've been able to have with them specifically for Royal Oak in the last few days.
Mrs. Anderson?
So you had touched on... So you had touched on something, you said that we're, you know, we have fatigue from being home, and the kids are feeling that too. I'm wondering what kind of emotional or mental health supports, or how we're looking at that for our students and families?
Thank you. So we did spend the summer in subcommittees across the district. We had over 180 staff members involved in separate committees, along with our administrators, looking at the multi-facets of the district. And one of those was completely dedicated to social and emotional support and wellness. It was a part of the plan that we had to submit to the state, and as a district, we felt that it warranted making that subcommittee one of the primary five of the work that we were looking at. So that committee has a set of resources. We have multiple versions of that out on our website, resources, if you want to self-help, and go there, as families or parents, they can do that. Our staff members were given a number of resources that they could use in the classrooms. And you know that the learning this fall has been very different than it was in the spring. So a part of a, a day for a student is kicking off the day with their, their fellow students and their teacher, the morning meeting, the family circles. And those were basically absent in the spring when we were shut down. Those have all been reinstated, and we've been doing those all fall. A point I would make to, to, just to, to speak about the support, we need to hit a certain number of students that we make contact with in a virtual setting in order to have that day count, much like we have to have physical attendance to count a day as instruction at the state, state level for pupil accounting. I'm very proud to say that we're at 98 to 99% contact with students in our district by the staff members, and that could be any staff members, the administrators, counselors, or their teachers on a regular basis. So we may have a few students out there that we're still trying to make a consistent contact with, or whose situation may have changed and they didn't notify us. But 75% is the threshold for the state to count a day, and again, Royal Oak is sitting at 98% of contact with students, which I'm very proud of. That means our teachers are going the extra miles to reach students and families.
I guess I'm just wondering, it's, so the resources are available on the website, but I'm wondering if there's a way for us to...
Oh, yeah.
Provide that, like, push that information out so people know that it's there, because I think people are, may really be needing that at some point.
Sure, sorry. We also have our team of social workers and counselors that are in place. So in addition to resources to the students, we're doing a screening process during the meetings that I spoke about, the, the family circles or the morning meetings, or contacts with the secondary students. If they have any indication that a student is struggling, or a parent notifies us that their child is struggling at home, we do have staff to reach out to them. So I would encourage any family that may be having a situation going on in their home and they want to make us aware of it, please do. Please reach out to your administrator or your teacher and let us know about that. But we're watching, we're taking our cues from parents as well, and then our counselors and our social workers are equipped to step in and offer additional support. The district, as you'll remember, did hire two general education social workers to supplement our team of social workers in the district, so it's students with IEPs, as well as those that are general education can receive support from social workers in the district.
Mrs. Van Heitzma. I'm sorry, Deb, do you have another question? Mrs. Van Heitzma.
Just following up on that, and I know, you know, with holidays coming, and holidays are stressors to begin with, we know that, you know, emotional challenges happen, suicides increase, a lot of negativity happens during the holidays. It's a happy time, but it's not a happy time for everybody. I mean, is there ways for us to, to boost, you know, social worker support and actually make contact with each and every student in some way, just to, I mean, I know teachers are kind of watching for that, but just to kind of touch base with kids and really say, you know, just kind of see how they're doing? Because sometimes people may not, even though we provide all these resources to them, they may not be able to reach out, or may not feel comfortable reaching out, because not every family supports, you know, supports, you know, mental health, seeking mental health support and assistance. But if we could do some kind of touch base with the children in some way, just to kind of do that, you know, see how they're feeling and get a sense, even if we, you know, they don't reach out.
Yeah, and that does happen as part of the lessons. That's part of our social and emotional support for our students, and part of our PBIS is to reach out to kids, have those conversations, have those prompts at those morning meetings. Some of them may be a writing assignment, a journal assignment to reflect on a statement made. Teachers read those all the time and understand where their students are. They watch for other signs of disengagement when they're at a meeting or they're supposed to be on. We don't require video. If a child wants to remain, just audio only, teachers are checking that you're still behind the screen if you're not on video. So I've watched that in my classroom observations recently. So there's multiple layers, it's not single. So I do think we have several, you know, avenues to reach kids and to watch for kids and to, to reach out. I will say that we know relationships that are established with the teachers are some of the strongest that take you through your life. Everyone remembers their teachers. You remember a teacher at the very least, and we do that all the time. So between that, our social workers, referrals from parents, and other things that we're doing throughout the curriculum to take the temperature of our kids emotionally and have them respond, I think there's just multiple layers. But we also, again, would welcome any referrals from families or friends if we happen to be missing something, which is, is possible.
I know we're also, I mean, through Roya, we're working on some things to support families, too. The same things, you know, positive messages of hope and, and different things like that. Do we, in addition to offering support to the children, do we provide information that could support families as needed as well? I mean, we could refer them to youth assistants and, and things of that nature, but just that constant message to, to let families know as well, if they really just need somebody to talk to, that we can provide that to them.
So we, we also know that our, you know, this time of year, if, if we were in person, there'd be much more interaction, not just between the teachers and the students, but also through all the groups that support our community. So Roya, the youth assistance, our blessings in a backpack program are making home deliveries. Our Churchill program, the, the staff took time out of their day on Tuesday to deliver bags to every home of a student in the Churchill program and to make a connection, and delivered it to the homes. We also have packet pickup, where kids are able to come up with their family members to the school on a routine basis to get supplies or get copies of things or books. So we're, there's multiple layers of connection. But to your point, I think the agencies that support Royal Oak in general are also adding another layer. And our PTAs, in a discussion on Monday night, were also asking about how many of the things that they normally would do this time of year, can they still continue to do safely based on our recommendations and our plans? And how do they have to rethink those or be more creative about those? So as a follow-up from that meeting, I did talk to all of our principals about, think about the needs of your own school, you know them best. You know, what might, what else might the PTA be able to help us with, and what else could the district do? So I think we're kind of, you know, it's that village, we're trying to just surround all the issues and, and keep all of our kids connected as much as possible.
Any other comments?
I guess the only piece I would like to add is that with the Oakland County Health Division's guidance, when they changed us from a C to a D to an E, once you get down to E, even if there are no cases in the school buildings, they're suggesting to shut down in-person education for 14 days with no cases. Again, that was the piece that I thought about. And then also, if you have any known cases with staff or students but no transmission, they, again, they're saying, shut down the entire district for in-person learning.
Right.
So when that came out on Friday, that was really the piece. And again, depending on what data you looked at, the cases either tripled or quadrupled in that time period. So I think it is the right decision. Any other comments from the board, questions from the board?
Mrs. Van Heitzma.
I know, I get a daily report now, I get to look at the trends, and so even just looking at this week compared to last week, everything is double what it was last week. All the, the reports are, are double. And what's kind of scary, too, is if you look at the trend of the pandemic in 19 whatever, we're following that same trend. So the trend was kind of that spike, and then it kind of curved, and then we're actually kind of following the same trend, which is a little interesting itself, but the question too, so we're talking about all this for, for learning, so then my next question is, what happens with all the other activities? So sports and all that kind of stuff, what happens with, with all of that, unless that's part of what's coming forward?
So, in terms of athletics, we were finishing a fall season, and we were able to navigate that. Unfortunately, we did have some cases that came up, but they are in our community. So if you're together, there's going to be some exposure, some known exposure, and some that we find out about after the event, and that does occur. But we do know a lot about the virus that's been hitting our district. Because we're not back on a regular basis in the classrooms, much of it is either at a special event, or it's in the homes, but it impacts a staff member or a family. I do not know of any known MHSAA update, so is, the last I heard is they were proceeding with a winter season. I'm in contact with Mr. Jeremini and Mr. Wachowski all the time to understand where athletics fall for us in the district. But our participation in the fall was successful, and in many cases, a district sought out our process to follow. And we did turn some schools away who didn't follow our process before coming to an away event on Royal Oak facilities, and we were able to adjust with them and, and have them meet our protocols. So there were some programs that we were going to begin to open, so tuition preschool, the Young Oaks latchkey program, and some of our other special events for kids that are now going to be impacted. So another point of tonight's plan that I want to make sure people understand, and it was in my letter to the community, we can expect, following tonight's decision, that parents will also hear from their individual principal or those program directors, should there be any details that now need to change regarding those programs themselves. And so we wanted to make sure that people, you know, understood that. But we have been participating in athletics. I'm not sure what's up for the winter season or not, but we certainly know that they're, they're looking very closely at the same information and the same statistics that we are in order to guide us. There have been some winters or fall sports and winter sports have been deferred now to the spring for participation, and there's also been an impact on our middle school athletics as well due to the virus. In fact, I believe we were slated to, or they started tryouts today for one of the sports, but following tonight's decision, that may also need to change.
And, Mrs. Anderson?
I'm wondering about the technology, like, especially with the GSRP and, and any students we're adding, you know, with this change, are we up to date? Are the students all getting what they need technology-wise?
So, you know, technology is what it is, and we do have some failures. We have some families coming in and trading Chromebooks. We have a, an order placed right now for Chromebooks, and we also have some that have been arriving. If we have any family that still has a need for technology or connectivity, they should contact their principal or, or contact the district directly and let us know. But our deployment of devices out to the community was pretty robust, and so far, based on how students have been able to connect with the instruction that we've been in now through the fall, we've been able to do that with our students. And we know they're connecting in some way, but if there's a need we can help with, we would want to know that. Much like the supply chain question that was asked earlier, it also exists in the technology world. So everybody is looking for more technology, and the manufacturing is trying to keep up with that demand as much as they can. Things that used to take us 10 days to receive in district are now taking weeks to, to bring into the district. But we still have devices that we can deploy, should we need to, so if there is a need, we would need to know that.
Mrs. Sykes?
And that technology, if anybody's having a problem, that information on who to contact and everything is still on the Royal Oak Schools website?
Ask that again?
What?
Could you repeat your question?
Oh, sorry. If there's a problem with the Chromebooks or any technology, that information on where the parents would go, is, they can still find that contact information on our website, correct?
Correct, yes. So there's a survey out there that they can complete, which would help us fulfill the requests that they have. But if they don't find that link, they can always make a phone call or send a separate email to their principal or their teacher and let them know that, yes. Absolutely, sorry.
Mrs. Van Heitzma?
I actually want to piggyback on Mrs. Sykes' question, then I have another one. But as far as support, so I think from what I was hearing, a lot of teachers were providing tech support for the students. I don't know how that's going right now, but isn't there a way that we can have somebody who's not the teacher's providing tech support, like somebody for families to contact that's not the teacher, to help them resolve tech issues if they're still experiencing those?
So we have the full power of the Oakland Schools' technology. Our, our staff members are employed through Oakland Schools and to us, and they do assist on a regular basis with technology tickets, and that would be from our tech department staff. I know our teachers are also navigating and helping troubleshoot, but we have a full process for putting in tickets to follow up on either devices. Remember, the devices are in homes, and then they're at the mercy of the strength of the Wi-Fi or connectivity in that home. So what we used to do across the nine buildings in the district, we're now doing across the entire community in private homes, or trying to troubleshoot and help people navigate that. So we do have our staff in the technology department helping, and there is a process for filing a technology ticket, which is beyond the teacher. I, I'm appreciative that our teachers are helping, and I know quite a few of them have, but we also have our full tech department and the backing of the ticket system through Oakland Schools. We've opened and closed hundreds of tech tickets through that department already.
So families are able to contact Oakland Schools for support on the tech side?
I will make sure that the link for tech support is clear and that people know what's available. They can put in a tech ticket with the department, and again, our, our employees are employed through Oakland Schools, and then they work for us in Royal Oak.
And we're, we're still providing hotspots for people that might need hotspots?
Yes. If, if a family has an issue with connectivity to the internet, we would also want to know that in addition to the need for a device, yes.
My, my other question is, if you can elaborate further on special education students?
Sure.
So this statement says, we'll move to a full remote program. So that's not what they're doing today, and that wasn't what they were doing in September.
Correct.
So can you just talk more about how we're meeting the needs of those students?
So, so while their general ed partners were home, learning remotely continuously from September until now, the special education students in some of our programs were able to come up to receive face-to-face services with their teachers and specialists. They've, they were doing that. Some of the photos that you might see were out there with the PPE, with screens and shields and gowns, gloves and masks, because we know those students are not always the most successful on a remote platform either, and they can struggle with it. So the special services were delivered there. But now that, and in talking with our, our director, Jane Flaherty Graham, and also taking direction from the County Health Department, having those students come in when we're at a risk level of C, or it might have been very different than how we were operating, it was successful, but now in an E, we're, we're going to pause on that coming in. And should conditions change, much like I was asked the question if we'd reevaluate, we will. If the risk level changes, and we believe it's safe to then begin bringing those kids back into the program facilities to receive their services, we will do that. But for now, this Great Start Readiness Program and the special education students are, are going to follow with the general education students now and go to full remote. That's part of the recommendation.
I guess I would like to just, you know, continually hear more about that, to understand that we're connecting with those students if we make that decision. Because I know that was a real challenge. I think some of those parents were really frustrated with the process. And I, I guess I, I'm just concerned if, if those that had to have in-person, you know, how are we going to be continuing to follow up with those students and monitor them and, and their progress? Because I know that, you know, their learning challenges are, and, and they can lose a lot, a lot quicker than our other students, too.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
So before we call for a roll call vote, I'd just like to say thank you for all the responses to the myriad of emails that myself and my fellow board members have asked since this was released on Friday. I appreciate the efforts over the weekend. I appreciate the efforts of your staff getting the answers. So again, thinking about it, just how many people sit in the lower auditorium of the middle school, so we can calculate how many people can be here for public comment. So things like that, I appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to the administrators as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Van Heitzma?
Just one more comment, one more comment always. So I, I think just for, for the public's knowledge, I mean, we've gotten, you know, a lot of people feel strongly one way or the other, whatever your desire is for you, your students and your family, and what you feel is best for you. And so, but we've gotten a lot of communication that goes both directions. There's families that feel pretty strongly about the importance of the face-to-face learning, their concerns if their children aren't face-to-face, what it's going to do to them emotionally. And then we've gotten the ones that, you know, the priority is the health concern, which, you know, if you're not healthy, then you're not going to learn either. So, and I think, just so people are aware, we've gotten, you know, correspondence going both directions. And, and, you know, these decisions aren't easy. I think everybody here can agree to that, and in talking with counterparts across the county, feel very much the same, and, and I think minimizing the back and forth is really critical. Flip-flopping from one mode of learning to another creates more challenges and I think frustrations for families and interruption in learning, so, yeah, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Deb? Any last questions or comments? Any last questions or comments? With that, I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cardamon?
Yes.
Mrs. Beer?
I will vote yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Mrs., Mrs. Sykes, Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Brinker?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to 2.2, ROEA Letter of Agreement. Can I get a motion? Mrs. Dan Heitzma?
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the letter, the language changer, approves the letter of agreement with the Royal Oak Education Association as presented. This motion made by...
So again, you have a copy of the letter of agreement, the TA that's signed by both the ROEA, the MEA, as well as Royal Oak Schools. It does comply with the outline that enclosed session we gave the school district. Again, I'm supportive of it, I'm glad that we got it resolved. I'm glad the ROEA and the MEA came to agreement with us. I think that's a good thing. So if there's any other discussion, please, any questions, any comments? Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you. I just want to comment that ongoing discussion with our teachers' union has been very important. Of course, they are right there with our students, and they're the ones making those deepest connections and having the relationships and the response, leading an organization and completing that full-time job to be as responsive to the members as possible is quite a task. And so we want to make sure that they feel supported by their own colleagues as well as the district. So I think this is a very good step in the right direction to continue the strong relationship we have with our teachers' union.
Any other questions? With that? I'm sorry, we need a second? Mrs. Anderson, thank you. Now can we get a roll call vote, please?
Look at it, Marty. Mr. Cardamon?
Yes.
Mrs. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Brinker?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much. With that, that'll move to item three, public comment. If you'd like to address the Board of Education, please remain seated and raise your hand. When called on by the Board President, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to address the Board. If you exceed your three minutes, the Board President will ask you to finish your comments. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We're paying attention to your comments and appreciate them. However, school board members generally do not respond to public comment during the meetings. Questions that arise from public comment shall be referred to the superintendent or her designee for review, study, and possible future response. There's a clipboard right by the microphone. Please take a clean pen, sign the, I'm sorry, the itinerary, and keep the pen with you. Would anyone like to address the Board? Sir? No, you can sign in afterwards, but do state your name for the record, please.
My name is Dennis Lacks, I have a child at Northwood Elementary. My question is, when will the decision be made for what happens after January 29th? For the last two decisions, for the start of school, September 9th, was made around August 8th, one month before. For next week, it was made around October 8th. That was when the last board meeting was, that was one month before. Of course, I'm not going to include tonight, because obviously it's a special session because of what happened with the Health County. But both were one month before. So with January 29th, that puts us right at January 1st, 2nd, 3rd, which of course is right after the holidays. And the Health Department has said that's where the increase of cases are happening. So that puts the onus on the Board of, what do we determine for after January 29th? Because that's kind of probably at the height of what's going to happen. The reason, another reason I bring that up is we were supposed to start next week, and we just heard tonight that there was, we're roughly 30 staff short and only have two subs, and that we were supposed to start in a week. So that's why I bring that up. And then one of the Board members brought up, what is the determination of what happens after January 29th? What are the parameters? It's kind of like, you keep kicking the can and the goalposts change. I mean, both what parameters and everything else, so just what makes the determination? As you said, there are parents that want to go face-to-face. They'd actually like to go to school five days a week, just like the private schools around here, who have been five days a week since September, five months. And another local public school classroom, who have been four months, barring any pauses like West Bloomfield or anywhere else. On the flip side, there's also many parents that want to keep their kids at home, and I completely understand that too. And they want an option that works for them, whether it be remote or virtual. We don't want that debacle again. So I'd just like to put front of the Board, let's please keep the open communication for what we're going to do after January 29th, and consider both parents that want to go back to school and parents that do want to stay home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board? I see in the second row of people on the right, or my right, your left? Yes, that's you.
Hi, my name is Lydia Elshakarna. I'm a longtime Royal Oak president. I'm a product of Oakland Elementary, Keller Middle School, Royal Oak High School. I currently have two children who are enrolled in Oakland Elementary, one of which is special needs. He's supposed to be in Gen Ed 3rd grade, but he's in ASD classroom. Back when all of this started, back in March, it was a very abrupt ending for him. He is diagnosed with ASD, and he is completely nonverbal. I realize that that is on the more severe end of the spectrum for special needs families. Some are verbal and can get through this time. The abrupt ending for him was extremely difficult with no communication at that point. For Gen Ed students, for my son who was in the DK at the time, they were still doing CSOW and things like that to keep them interacted. We received virtually no information from the special ed department, which was a complete 180, if you would have asked me when I did his IEP in the fall of 2019. I walked out of that meeting feeling like I had an entire team of Avengers assembled to help my son. But since then, that has changed drastically. From September to November, you allowed him to come back to school in the school building. He's had a lot of issues and difficulty, because between the time from March to September, he's regressed very significantly, to the point where it's manifesting physically now. And frankly, the online option that you're offering, because you're taking away his in-person learning, is going to be detrimental to him. The online is not going to work for him whatsoever. It's just not possible. And on top of that, I have to deal with a Gen Ed student who is in kindergarten. So having him home and dealing with all of that on top of this just really isn't an option. And I know that, again, I am a very severe case on the end, but I feel like maybe there are other special ed parents out there that are dealing with certain things that they maybe are, don't want to voice, or don't feel that they can voice. So, I just, I feel that you guys have said that, you know, you have the PPE and you have all of these things to help that. So maybe possibly if we could keep what we're doing for the special ed department as is, rather than revoking it, would be at least something. Even if we're not moving forward and advancing to allowing them in the building four days a week, that may be extremely beneficial. Again, I don't speak for all special needs parents. I'm just one that saw this and decided to come here because I wanted it on record. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone, excuse me, would anyone else like to address the Board? Please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mary Ann Beebe, 626 Parkdale. I am a parent of two elementary children at Northwood, a 5th grader and a 2nd grader. And I wanted to address the Board today to, one thing I noticed that wasn't brought up today was the topic of curriculum for the kids with the continued remote learning. I can only speak from the perspective of an elementary school parent, but for my two girls, currently they're not learning any science or social studies right now. You know, two key, two key subjects in their curriculum that they're not receiving. So I wanted to bring in front of the Board, what is the plan? If we are going to potentially remain remote through the end of January, how are we going to address this gap in the curriculum? Because one thing I've learned in the last six months is that I am not a teacher. Yet I've tried to supplement their learning and teach them extra science lessons and extra social studies lessons. I actually assigned two lessons to my girls before I left here. But I'm not their teacher. And I'm trying to do the best that I can, and I'm sure other parents are in that position as well. So I just hope that the district is looking into that to make sure that our Royal Oak students aren't falling behind during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I would like to address the Board? I see none, so with that, I will close public comment. With that, we move to item four, adjournment. With that, we...